Good evening. Welcome to the August 7th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My proclamation people back there on the back row. First up tonight, we have a proclamation, a couple of proclamations in recognition of Small Business Administration's 70th anniversary. I have two of these. They're the same, correct? Okay, so I'm just going to read one of them. If that's okay with you guys. But I guess I have copies for both our Chamber of Commerce and for Visit Stillwater. Whereas on this day, 70 years ago, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an act of Congress establishing the Small Business Administration with the purpose of promoting and supporting the growth and success of small businesses across the United States of America. And whereas since its founding, the SBA has stood as a pillar of support for America's entrepreneurs by fostering the growth and vitality of small businesses, which are the backbone of our economy. And today, we recognize the invaluable contributions and the dedication to empowering entrepreneurs, fostering economic opportunity and innovation, and building a vibrant, inclusive, and resilient economy for all Americans. And whereas the SBA has been instrumental in providing unparalleled access to capital for entrepreneurs who face obstacles in securing traditional financing. And through the SBA's loan guarantee program, small businesses have thrived, creating millions of jobs, economic growth, and with its firm commitment to promoting diversity and equity, the SBA launched the 8A Business Development Program, which provides support, mentorship, and access to government contracts for socially and economically disadvantaged small business owners. And whereas recognizing the extraordinary contributions that American women make to the economy, the SBA established the Office of Women's Business Ownership, empowering women entrepreneurs and women-owned small businesses to thrive. With specialized resources, counseling, and access to federal contracting opportunities, the SBA continues to promote gender equity in business ownership and has helped women shatter glass ceilings and build strong, successful businesses that propel us towards great economic prosperity. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 2023, as a day to celebrate the 70th anniversary of the U.S. Small Business Administration. And I urge all Stillwater residents, businesses, and community organizations to join me in honoring the SBA's remarkable legacy and the efforts of local organizations such as the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce and Visit Stillwater by continuing to support and uplift small businesses. Would you guys like to come say anything or take a picture with your proclamations?
I think I'd just like to say on behalf of the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce that certainly, small businesses are the backbone of every community and grateful for the recognition of 70 years, it's hard to believe, of entrepreneurship and creativity and allowing dreams to come true.
Absolutely.
Thank you from Visit Stillwater. And without these small businesses and all the businesses in our community, we wouldn't be where we are now. Thank you.
Thank you all for the work that you do. All right, councilors, next on our agenda is the consent docket. Are there questions, comments, or an action on the consent docket? I move to approve consent docket. We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item five is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearings. I do have a couple of folks signed up for this item. Who I think both want to speak about the resolution on item eight of the agenda tonight. If you are here to speak about the smart metering resolution and you haven't signed up, please see Patty. I have two people, Kyle Taterold and Chris Redding. Kyle, come on up. We'll have you go first. If you could just state your name and address, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Kyle Taterold, 602 West Arapahoe. I just want to go on the record in support of the opt-out. I was here in June of '21, I think I spoke about it at length. So I'll spare you guys that one again, but I would like to support that. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your advocacy. Chris Redding.
My name is Chris Redding. I live at 1226 North Lincoln Street here in Stillwater. And would like to also encourage you to approve the opt-out for the smart metering. I used to be a conspiracy theorist, but most of my conspiracies have become true. And so with that in mind, I come here with a concern, a grave concern over the smart metering. It's the kind of data that they record and what that data is going to be used for. From my understanding, and the information has been limited, but they're going to record and monitor the amount of electricity that's being used in your residence. And that's going to be reported back to a central database. That concerns me greatly because I know that you can take that data and read it in a way and get patterns, get ideas, get knowledge about how a person lives and what a person does, who might be in that home, what they might be doing at any given moment. And that information, in the wrong hands, can be used for ill intent or for other purposes that may not be to the best interest of the person. For example, at six o'clock, 1,200 watts of power is used for 90 seconds in my home. About four minutes later, about 1,100 watts goes on for about six minutes. 800 watts goes on for 15 minutes after that. Then nothing for a while. Then I turn on a light, I read for a while. That's not going to read very much, but now you know that I get up in the morning, I microwave a cup of coffee from yesterday, I make a pot of coffee for today, I take a shower roughly 10 minutes, but it takes 15 minutes for my hot water heater to recharge. And you can tell that by the amount of power that's being used. We cook breakfast later on, maybe five, 10 minutes cooking some eggs for the kids. Power comes up a little bit higher at seven o'clock as everybody gets up. Eight o'clock, it gets up even higher as we have a lot more activity, hair dryers, things like that. And then everything shuts off pretty much at eight fifteen when we go to school. Now, the house could be empty or the house could have my wife. She doesn't generally use a lot of power. But as you can see, it doesn't take a whole lot of interpretation. I mean, I'm sitting here just thinking about it. And I can see what kind of a pattern persists, especially if I had days of this information, dates, times, amounts, because I know that certain items use certain amounts of power. And when that amount of power is used for a specific time, I have an even better idea. Because if I have, say, 950 watts for 53 minutes, and that happens four times a day on Saturday, that's my dryer. And you can tell I have four loads of clothes, at least with four kids and two adults, running every Saturday. Just a few seconds. I would like to express my concern, as I just expressed. And I would like to request the ability to opt out so that people, probably not you guys, but other people would not have that information out in the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. I don't have anyone else sign up for public comment? All right, we'll move on to item seven on the agenda, which is general orders. First up, 7A is our daily bread update from Rachel Conley. There you are.
I should have slides. I don't know where they are. You say that like I'm going to see them with these glasses on. I love your confidence in my eyesight, though. Oh, oh, she wasn't kidding. All right. I put slides so I wouldn't talk to you for too long. You're welcome. Huh? Oh, sorry. You're taller than I am. Okay. Presentation is where in your fancy new version of PowerPoint? There it is. All right. Hi, friends. I just wanted to come to you today, more than any saying to say, give you a little update on our daily bread, because we are partners, and then also just to tell you thank you. So going through this, about our daily bread, for those of you that may not know, we are a guest choice shopping experience for people experiencing food insecurity in Payne County. Anyone that comes in our doors leaves with food. So if you are experiencing food insecurity, you will get groceries. We do have income requirements to shop from USDA commodity items, but we have a lot of guests that come in and say they have increased expenses or have had a family emergency, where they may be outside of the income requirements, but they still need groceries. And we are able to provide for them, thanks to the generosity of our community. Our mission is feeding our community collaboratively and providing connections that enable lasting change. So the feeding part is pretty obvious to people, because we are a food bank, but we're also a resource center. So it's really important to us that all of the resources that are available in Payne County, and there are a lot, that we research them, that we know about them, so that we can share them with our guests as well. So it's walking alongside people and really helping them plug into other resources to hopefully empower them to get beyond their current circumstance whenever possible. A quote from one of our founders I love, "We will always treat our guests with the respect and dignity that each and every one of us deserves." We run our daily bread like a for-profit. Just because you're coming and you're not paying for your groceries doesn't mean you're not going to be treated like a guest, like a customer. And we strive to provide excellent customer service in every aspect of what we do. So just a couple of stats I found interesting through Feeding America, based on the last census data, 24% of children in Payne County under five are living in poverty, which is a direct reflection of likely experiencing food insecurity in their home. 23.3% of residents are living below the poverty line in Payne County, which is one and a half times the Oklahoma rate and almost double the U.S. rate. Remember, that takes into account all of our rural areas, which we provide a lot of outreach in. So we serve all Payne County residents. If you can get to us with transportation and you live anywhere in Payne County, we will serve you. If you come to us from outside of Payne County, we will serve you. And then we will connect you to a resource closer to you so that you don't have to use gas money to get to us if there's a resource closer. These are some of our off-site distribution efforts. We have the Ripley Marketplace, which is open once a week in Ripley at the Ripley Community Center. The Lincoln Academy Marketplace, a partnership with Stillwater Public Schools that is open during the school year at Lincoln Alternative Academy. And Pete's Pantry, a partnership with OSU Campus Life that is open three times a week now, starting in the fall on OSU campus. We also have our mobile market that goes out into communities every Wednesday afternoon. We go to Yale, the OSU Family Resource Center, Perkins, Cushing, and Glencoe. We visit these towns because there are people that cannot get to us. And that's also the purpose of our satellite sites. If people need groceries in our community, we want them to have access to groceries. Not everyone can get to our building. Even if they live in town, they might not have transportation. We do have some people that ride the bus to come get groceries, but it's a lot to take your groceries home on a bus. So we do a lot of outreach to provide supplemental groceries for people that might have a need, that either need more than they can get in their monthly visit to our daily bread or they just can't get to us. So some exciting happenings, I've got a few photos up. If you haven't heard about the OSU Student Farm, you should come to the chamber meeting on Friday for Business at Lunch and hear all about it. They're donating 100% of produce grown out at the Old Swine Facility to our daily bread. This morning, with the delivery of watermelons, I believe we topped 28,000 pounds of produce this year, which is insane. Quilt of Valor, the pictures on the bottom, that program asked us to identify veteran guests. And they did a ceremony at our daily bread. I was just a weeping mess the entire time. It was awesome. OSU Extension classes, we partner with OSU Extension to provide cooking, nutrition, canning, parenting, all kinds of classes. And they come to us and perform those, which is fantastic and such a benefit to our guests. Senior servings meals, which are meals, it's a program through the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma. They make fresh meals, freeze them, flash freeze, and then they have large print instructions for oven and microwave. Anybody coming to us that needs groceries that's over 60, that has problems standing long enough to make a nutritious meal, can qualify for up to 12 of those meals a month, in addition to groceries that they can get. We have salons that have adopted a shopping session. We have salon stations so that our guests that come in can also get a haircut while they wait to get their groceries. Adopt a session groups, like our Lions Club there at the bottom, who has, I believe it's second Monday. So second Monday of the month, the Lions roll in and help our guests shop, which is pretty cool. Summer feeding meals, this summer, we provided summer feeding meals to kids at the Ripley Marketplace. Just something we've never been able to do, so we were so blessed to be able to do that. Serving numbers through June, I figured that was six months, so it would give you kind of a snapshot of the year. 6,362 households representing almost 15,000 individuals. We served just at our daily bread. Our satellite site served over 3,300 households. Mobile market served over 1,600 households. We served over 12,000, almost 13,000 senior servings meals, 110 haircuts, 195 emergency bags. And in June, we served 79 summer feeding meals, which for our first year and in Ripley, is pretty good. So our partnership specifically with you, we had to determine recently for our yearly financial audit, the in-kind value of our building and what we would have to pay you in rent. That's a lot of money. Thank you for not making us pay that. Our building is very valuable and we recognize that and we appreciate you guys. We're on the road crew list for clearing ice, which may not seem like a big deal, but when roads are safe, but driveways aren't, we have so many guests and volunteers that come in and they're at risk for falls. And so having the crews come out as a stop and clearing our passageways, we had several sessions last year when we shouldn't have been able to. So that's a big deal, when people need groceries. Working with Bill Millis on kind of shifting our handicap spots for more safety and better access to our building, and he has done that all out of the goodness of his own heart. We arranged a new utility credit, which I believe you guys discussed, for our payments, because DPS shares our building, but they're all utilities paid. So you guys are now giving us a credit because of the increase in bills. And we can use that money to buy food, which we need. Crisis Intervention Team, which we work with frequently. I've got cell phone numbers and I'm not afraid to use them. And I am so thankful, because we're not qualified to deal with mental health emergencies, so it's nice to have backup. And the invitation to join the monthly cart meetings led by Captain Stevens, which includes Mission, Wings, Grand Mental Health, US, Payne County Youth Services, Stillwater Medical Center, where we can get together and say, hey, I had this guest and I wasn't sure how to handle it, can you guys help me? Or we have this guest that's having this continued problem, what can we do? Like, that's a collaboration. None of these people have to put their time toward, but we're so thankful that we have it. So thank you, councilors and mayor, for joining us to fight hunger and feed hope. We appreciate you so much. And I would love to host you all sometime in a tour, because there's lots of new happening all the time at ODB. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Rachel, for the information and for everything that you guys do at our daily bread. It's just such a tremendous, tremendous impact on the community.
Thank you.
It's great to see it all at one time in this, just this little bit. But we know there's just so much more that happens over there.
I often go on for two hours. I won't make you if you come for a tour, but like, come on.
Counselors, any questions?
I just did what the mayor said. Thank you so much. And I think the expansion of services, that y'all continue to find new ways to assist people. And one of the big things, I think, is the partnerships you have with the schools and with the OSU. You know, students can't learn if they're hungry. And so I think that's such an important piece of what y'all are doing, in addition to everything else. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our daily bread has become a tremendous resource for our community. And I can remember sort of the disjointed nature of food banks in Stillwater before our daily bread was created. And just thank you and your predecessor and everybody who's made that possible.
I stepped into an awesome structure, so I can't take credit for it, but I love it every day.
You stepped in, but you can't step out.
Not planning on it. Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Rachel. Next up on item seven of the agenda is item B, the Lake McMurtry Friends Annual Report, from Jill Van Aken.
Mayor Joyce, City Council, thank you so much for having us tonight to share some of the exciting highlights from our last fiscal year. The mission of Lake McMurtry Friends is to enrich quality of life by providing opportunities to engage in sustainable outdoor recreation, environmental education, and nature conservation. In our last fiscal year, we had approximately 41,000 visits from 38 different states and 164 different Oklahoma communities. The most common states represented were Oklahoma, Texas, Kansas, Colorado, and Arkansas, which is the same from the year before. And the most common Oklahoma communities were Stillwater, Edmund, Guthrie, Oklahoma City, Enid, Perry, Tulsa, Perkins, Glencoe, and Yukon. In our last fiscal year, we sold 8,000 day passes. That is a drop from our two previous years during our COVID years. Our numbers went sky high, because people couldn't go anywhere else. And we sold 608 annual memberships, which is higher than our pre-COVID years and really not that much lower than our COVID years. So our annual membership sales are going up as well. Here you can see our annual revenue year over year. This year, we're really excited that we've grown $50,000 in revenue. We've grown our donor base, and then we've also grown our grant funding. We've had a lot of really exciting projects out at the lake. It was a long time coming, but we finally were able to begin construction and complete our half-mile ADA compliant paid loop. When we submitted for the grant, it was pre-COVID, when we were awarded the grant. It was during supply chain shortages, increased costs. So we had to cut a lot of things out of the original bid, one being the interpretive signs and benches. Well, we've been able to raise outside of the grant funds for three interpretive sign and bench combos from Stillwater Frontier Rotary, TSET, and the CREC Foundation. And then Jalino CCC, who we worked with on the construction of the trail, went ahead and purchased the additional three signs and installed them. And as we get sponsors, then he'll just invoice us for those. I have to say, Jalino was amazing to work with. Also in our efforts for accessibility at the lake and a grant from the Don and I Foundation, we were able to build a universal access tent campsite in the last year. It has quickly become our most popular tent site. It's located in the west recreation area, and it is absolutely beautiful. We also completed two new primitive campsites, Black Jack Bay and Roadrunner Ridge. Both are on our orange trail in our west recreation area. We had a little dog damage during one of the storms. And I have to say, I have the most amazing facilities crew. With our little makeshift kayak barge, we were able to get out, replace all of the boards, get all the welding done, and get us back in business. You know, you have to get creative when you're a nonprofit, so I was really pleased with the work they did. And we also completed construction on a low ropes course that will open up this fall. It will have eight elements. It's also in the west recreation area. We'll be able to hold team-building events for corporate groups, for school groups. And it was sponsored also by Jalino CCC. We had a lot of fun events last year. We had our inaugural Orange Dirt Trail Series run. I have to give a huge thank you to my trail advisory committee, who came up with the concept, who planned it, and who executed it, raising over $5,000 for the organization. In our inaugural year, we capped it at 200 and sold out. We had people show up the day of and just ask if they could donate the registration fee and still compete, because they wanted to be a part of it. So I mean, it was amazing. You could do a 5K, a 10K, a half, or a full marathon. And we'll have our second this coming October. We had our annual holiday light display, lights on the lake. We changed it up a little bit this time. We had a smaller drive-through element, but we actually created an enchanted forest. We had over half a million lights, and we had approximately 1,400 visits. So every year, it continues to grow and we're super excited about, and it's so much fun. I mean, we get to start Christmas in September hanging lights and just live in Christmas, you know, until January. We had Chili Bike again, and the weather was perfect. If you've not experienced Chili Bike, it is the most fun event you could come out to. You can ride one trail, you can ride all four trails, you can ride our gravel route, or you can just hang out and enjoy the chili potluck. I mean, it's just, we've got great music, everybody's in a great mood. And it is, it is one of the funnest events, I think, that we have. And we raised over $7,000 at Chili Bike this last year with over 200 people participating. We have great programs. We're really growing our program area out at the lake. And so first, I want to brag on Connor King, our Outdoor Recreation Education Director. He's brought a lot to us in the last three and a half years. We were lucky to be able to lure him away from UCO Outdoor Recreation. Not only did Connor renew his American Red Cross Lifeguard AED and CPR certification this year, but he was also able to add Wilderness Versage certifications to his credentials. And so we're really thrilled. And it's unfortunately already come in handy with somebody who was injured on the red trail, but he was able to go out and find them, administer first aid, get them to the emergency room. And now they look happily ever after and everything is great. Connor leads our beginners backpacking clinics with one of our annual members, Jason Judd, who I would say is an expert backpacker. These are overnight groups. They start either at the red trail head or the blue trail head. They hike the trail, they set up a primitive campsite overnight. And then if they started on the red, they hike out the blue and vice versa. These have been really, really popular. In fact, we've had groups that have gone through these that have never backpacked before and fell in love with it so much that now they've formed groups of their own and they're backpacking across the country. So we're super excited to be able to share this fun activity with people who want to learn the sport. And then in the fall, we'll have an advanced backpacking clinic for people who want to step up their game a little bit. We still partner with the Life Adult Day Healthcare Center. This is one of our favorite things. So Life Adult Day Healthcare Center will bring their participants out to the lake, if they're able to, to fish, just to enjoy the scenery or to take a small hike. But if they can't bring them out, then we take the lake to them. We always do a lesson. Connor is great at putting together lessons, fun activities, and really brings a little bit of Lake McMurtry into their lives. And we're really proud of that program. We continued having dog socials last year. And then on Halloween, we had a dog social and costume contest. The winner won three dog bakery treats, and they were thrilled. We hosted two disc golf tournaments. And then we also hosted a Shinran Yoku, which is a Japanese practice of forest bathing, where it's just being mindfully immersed in nature. You journal about what you're experiencing. It's just very meditative in its properties. We've continued to host OSU groups. We had the OSU President's Leadership Council, the OSU McKnight Scholarship Program, the OSU ROTC, and the OSU Net Impact Groups. They come out and we set up lawn games for them. We help them to kayak. We do team-building events with them. And these are great groups that have just become repeat groups that come out to us. And Adventure Camp. We love Adventure Camp. So this is spring break Adventure Camp. We limit it to 10 kids, because we have it in the west recreation area, a bait shop, because inclement weather, you just really don't know during spring break. But then we have Right on Its Heels Summer Adventure Camp. And it's STEM learning through outdoor recreation, plus a lot of good outdoor fun through kayaking, fishing, swimming, hiking. They learn shelter building, they get to make smores. These kids have a great time. We have six weeks. We have a capacity for 40 campers each week. And every week, we were at capacity, a couple of weeks were over it, and one week, we're just right below the cut line. So the kids love it. And as you can see, Connor loves it even more, as he let them do his face painting and had a blast. It's hard to tell. I do want to share that we do have a new program that we're launching this fall. I'll be able to tell you more about it in my next annual report. But we want to thank Leadership Stillwater Class 31. But we want to thank Leadership Stillwater Class 31 for selecting us as their class project to help us raise over $16,000 so we can launch an Earn a Bike after-school program. We'll be working with at-risk youth with Stillwater Middle School. And if the kids successfully complete the program, at the end of the school year, they'll actually earn a bike, water bottle, everything they need to bike safely. I've been shadowing Bike Club Tulsa, who started a program like this there, and it's been incredibly successful in improving grades, attendance, behavioral issues. It's just being a part of a group like that is really shown to be beneficial, especially for kids that have some struggles. So, we'll start that next month. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jill. Again, you know, both of these presentations, just such great public-private partnerships in this community. You guys have done such a fantastic job of managing not just the beautiful natural resources that we have at the lake, but actually creating, I mean, these activities and programs. There's so much for our community to take advantage of at Lake McMurtry, and it's due to your work and the work of the volunteers, the board, the employees that you guys have out there. And it's just a fantastic example of what can be done when a private nonprofit comes alongside and does things the city cannot do. We appreciate it very much.
Well, we love it. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I'm just always so grateful to hear from our public-private partnerships there and their ability to be inclusive. It's something that's really important to our family, and I just love that you are being intentional and thoughtful, whether that's from a disability perspective, or from just including at-risk youth, or seniors, just being very diverse in the group that you're trying to do outreach with. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for being here. Next up, item C is consider approval for the Stillwater Police Department to purchase some equipment that Chief Watts is going to tell us about.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilors.
Stillwater Police Department SWAT team utilizes protective body armor as part of its regular operations. The body armor has a regulated useful life of five years, and the current body armor is set to expire in October of this year. The SWAT team has identified a replacement body armor needed that best fits their operational goals, and it's available through GSA, or the United States General Service Administration. GSA utilizes a competitive process to procure a wide variety of goods and services for the federal government. State and local governments are eligible to purchase through GSA contracts. Lead time for replacement armor will require fitting to take place in mid-August, and we're requesting is the purchase of Ardbark Project 7 Scalable Plate Rack Armor through GSA contract, GS07F141DA, and then have the special item number on here, Protective Apparel. Funding for the body armor has already been allocated in the FY24 budget project account, Any questions that I can answer?
What happens to the old expired armor?
Typically, we donate it to... The body armor for the soft-body armor will donate to CLEET, the Council on Law Enforcement, Education, and Training, and then they will donate it to agencies that can't afford body armor, but they require them to sign a waiver saying that it is expired and is not guaranteed to hold up to stopping projectiles that it was guaranteed to stop in the five years prior.
Well, we appreciate that we have the ability to keep our folks safe while they're out there doing the difficult work.
I appreciate this council's continued support of that, whether it is body armor or other equipment. You've all been very supportive and have always made sure that our officers have the best equipment and are well taken care of, and it is very much appreciated.
Do you have a recommended motion for us?
Motion to approve the purchase 20 sets of Ardbark Project 7 Scalable Plate Rack Armor through the GSA contract, in amount not to exceed $90,000.
Councilors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the item. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of 5 to 0. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item 7D is consideration discussion and possible reasonable action related to the JCI Performance Contract. City Attorney, would you like to go first?
Sure. As you know from previous discussions about this project, the performance-based efficiencies project is really two prongs. It's the performance contract that includes the identified improvement measures, and then the second prong is the project financing. So, at the last two meetings, I provided an update regarding the legal issues with project funding. As you know, the city approved financing with Bank of America previously. Before the city was able to close on that financing, the state treasurer listed a...published a list of restricted financial institutions pursuant to state law known as the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act. So, since that time, the city has been evaluating its options to finance the project in compliance with state law. One of those options was evaluating whether or not the city could meet an exception in the act, specifically an exception known as the Reasonable Availability Exception. Given that the legislation was new, and there exists no guidance for cities on what the legal standard of meaning that exception would be, the city reached out to the Attorney General's office for guidance. As you'll recall, just before the last meeting, I had received a letter from the Attorney General in response to that request for assistance. I have now had time to review that letter. I will point out, it's not an official Attorney General opinion, but it is a letter of support from the Attorney General. The letter does support that the city, at least that the Attorney General supports the city's position that it can meet the Reasonably Available Exception to the act. So, what does that mean? So, what it means in terms of next steps is that the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act requires the governing body to make a determination that we meet the exception, that the services from Bank of America are not otherwise reasonably available from another financial institution. So, if directed to do so, my office will prepare a resolution making that determination for your consideration. In tandem with that resolution, Bank of America has asked that we pass an authorizing resolution. It's not necessarily a special resolution, it's just broadly authorizing that the city wishes to finance this project through a tax-exempt lease-purchase agreement with Bank of America, as in the best interest of the city. And also, there's some provisions in there that would authorize a representative to execute the related financing documents. So, that would be the next step to proceed with financing with Bank of America.
Councilor's questions about the legal implications here?
I have a couple, if nobody else does.
We'll let you go first.
Well, I mean, what I want to...you mentioned that the letter we got from the Attorney General is not an official AG opinion. My understanding, under the law, is that the AG is the enforcer of this law, and so it would stand to reason that if the current Attorney General is telling us that he finds this to be a reasonable exception, that we should be able to rely on that. But do we...is there any precedent for relying on the written letter from the Attorney General, rather than like...because an official opinion is a legal document.
That's correct. The Attorney General's opinions can be relied upon, some are deemed presidential, not presidential, but cities can rely on those as the official interpretation of certain state law, and those can be relied upon. I also do not know of any authority that would allow us to rely on a letter. However, as you explained, specifically in the act, the Attorney General is authorized to do anything whatsoever necessary to enforce the act. So, arguably, he has supported a position that we meet an exception, and I think that that would be a good position to be in if we were to determine if the council wishes to move forward with the resolution, finding that we meet the exception.
So, there's no other potential liability for us individually or for the city if, I mean, if a...I mean, since this is an Energy Discrimination Act, if an energy company who feels like Bank of America is discriminatory in their practices, could they attempt to sue us either personally or as the city? Do we have any sense of...or would that be precluded under the act? I mean, I guess, I don't know of any...we're kind of stepping out into a completely unknown area of law here, it seems to me.
Yeah, I have not been asked or considered yet another financial institution.
Or an energy company.
Or an energy company.
Who felt like Bank of America was...
Yeah.
There's not a private right of action, I suppose, authorized in the act, but...
Well...
It just seems...
Likely not, given the purpose of the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act. The overall purpose and policy was to encourage state contracts and contracts with political subdivisions with institutions that were not deemed to not discriminate against the energy industry. To me, that's more public policy-related, so I don't know.
So, one of the state reps who sponsored the legislation could come and say...I mean, I just...I guess I'm probably really, more than anything, trying to make the point that this is a terrible state law that makes zero sense, and it creates a complete...I mean, I do not like having to try to take an action as a city councilperson without any understanding of whether what we're doing is authorized or not, or whether it subjects us as the city, or subject us personally, some sort of liability, it seems. I certainly don't like being the guinea pig to step out into it. Now, I appreciate the fact that the Attorney General has given us as much clarity as he can give us at this point, and he seems to agree that the state law is not particularly helpful. But I just want to make sure that we all understand that, from a legal standpoint, there's a whole lot of gray, even with the Attorney General's statement.
So, there's no additional next step with the Attorney General? There is no, like, official...in the process as we know it, there's no official opinion that would come if we do this paperwork, XYZ, next?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the AG's office, or they're working on an official AG opinion, and this was just a response to our request for guidance as it relates to this project specifically. Again, it's frustrating, kind of the mayor said, there is a lot of gray area. And, you know, I anticipate that, as a city, there will be challenges navigating this legislation as it relates to other contracts the city has, not just this project. So, we're going to have to just continue to take it.
We can request a formal opinion, correct?
Yes, we could.
On a specific question?
Yes, we could.
How...do you know how long that generally takes?
No, I'd have to review it. There is a process for requesting it, and I could review that and report back.
Thanks.
So, if we were to rely on this guidance and jump through all the hoops the Bank of America wants us to jump through, and we take the risk of the gray and move forward, and three years from now, or seven years from now, we have a new Attorney General who revokes that guidance, are we then at risk because we are now out there in a relationship financially, and the Attorney General has pulled the rug out from under us?
There's some risk involved. I don't know what any...what position a future Attorney General would take on whether or not you could rely on a previous letter of guidance. I think there probably is some risk involved.
All right. So, from the legal perspective, that's the situation that we're in. Mr. Moore, what's staff's current status on the project?
Yes, thank you. As City Attorney currently mentioned, there's two components to this project. You all have just been discussing the financial component. There's also the performance contract piece of the project that has the full project scope that's been approved by council. As we've been discussing as staff, the last...as this process of legal processes has been going on, we've discussed, you know, how do we implement some of these things? Because these are important projects, right? We want to see energy savings projects in our community. So, if this isn't able to go forward with the financing, how would we be able to, as staff, to implement these projects? And so, during their review, one of the concerns that was raised was, and the project scope was the elimination of two full-time positions with the electric department. That equates to about $250,000, or roughly 25% of the stated annual savings for the project. Electric department leadership has objected to these positions being removed from their departments and included in the scope, and so we're working through options on how to address this. You know, should staff, you know, recommend that we eliminate these two positions, you know, it's not in the best interest of the city. In addition, over the life of the project, the city has had some staffing changes. Even as recent as this week, the point of contact has changed on the project. And so, I would like some additional time to review with my internal staff, the departments that have been involved with this JCI project, to review the scope really closely and evaluate options for the energy-saving solutions. So, with that being said, I'd like to propose that city staff come back to you at our next meeting, which is August 21st. One, to present an analysis of the current scope. I'd like to get together with my team and really look at that scope, and then bring alternate options for implementation if we need to, or if we feel like those are available, and then just a recommendation, a general recommendation from staff on how to proceed. So, that's kind of an update on the performance contract.
Councilor's questions for staff?
So, if we do not eliminate those two positions, would this project be economically feasible? So, you said it was $250,000 a year.
Correct.
Would that kill the feasibility of the project?
Well, Kimberly can...or City Attorney can chime in, but the state statute, I believe, allows for capital contribution or capital avoidance to be contributed to the project. And so, the $250,000, if it's the council's desire, could be committed as a capital expense to the project.
Out of capital budget, some other part of the budget?
It would actually come out of anticipated project savings, capital cost avoidance, or efficiencies that we've realized as a result of the project could be allocated then to meet that gap.
That's correct.
And another question, are there any other cities that are on this chain with us? I mean, are we the guinea pigs? Are we truly the guinea pigs? So far as you know, Kimberly?
As far as I know, we are the only city right now...we're not the only city navigating the EDA and the restricted financial company list, but as it results to this type of contract, I believe that...but I have not found any peer cities to reach out to.
Okay.
We're also bumping up against the timeline with JCI in terms of signing contracts and finalizing things. Where are we on that discussion?
Yeah, so both Bank of America and Johnson Controls have agreed to extend the date. For Johnson Controls, it would be the date tissue notice to proceed to September 10th, and for Bank of America, it would be to close on the project financing, September 10th. Yep.
Thank you.
I don't want to be too demonstrative about this, but this issue of two staff positions that was in the performance contract, when we approved it, was not something that was highlighted or brought to our attention, or that staff objected to at the time. Find that problematic, I assume that's part of what you guys are trying to still figure out at this point?
Yes. Yeah, I find it problematic that it came to you the way it did. Our electric director, Lauren Smith, is here tonight. He's documented it well, and what was presented to him before the final scope and what was presented to you seemed to change. So, I'm not trying to point fingers at staff, but at some point, at some level, some miscommunication was made, or something was changed in that final scope.
Yeah, well, we need to do what we can to get to the bottom of that, because I think it's particularly problematic if staff's not fully aware of, or not fully behind, recommendations that are made to the council. That's, you know, the amount of project work that goes into it before it comes to us. The council does rely on staff to provide a full and accurate representation of the agreements, and if that's not the case here, then we need to reexamine the issue for sure. So, with that said, I mean, I think it makes sense for us to look at this again in two weeks and ask that you, Mr. Moore, and your staff are able to come back and give us a little bit more information on where to go from here.
Okay, sounds good.
Included in that, where we go from here, alternatives. If we were to drop this project, understand that we're on the hook for $150,000, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we were just to drop the project, write a check for $150,000, what else could we do to try to attain some of these savings? If you could bring that back to us, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
And we should emphasize that we're on the hook for $150,000 to pay JCI for work they have done.
Correct, yeah.
Not just like a penalty or something.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right.
I do think it's important, Council Hardin, to your point, that we also acknowledge the work that our energy transition... the work that our Energy Transition Task Force, Renewable Energy Task Force has been working with us on behalf of our community for the last, I think, over a year. And I think our, not closure, I guess, just our continued effort and like good faith effort to drive this to an end that is, you know, meets their recommendations and the intent that they've been working towards. It's so important when our community members take time to, their time, to work on these issues and important topics for our community. I really value the time that they've spent doing that. And I'd like to see this can not kicked too many more times.
I agree.
Do you want a motion to postpone?
I don't think we need a motion of any kind, do we?
No actions necessary. We'll bring back an agenda item on the 20th first. At the same time, would you like to consider resolutions?
Might as well have them ready just in case.
Okay.
For sure. Yeah, I mean, you know, we need to get to a point where we understand what we're going to do, as Vice Mayor said, to meet the recommendations that our task force has brought to us, one way or the other. And so we need to be ready to act. All right, that takes us to item eight on the agenda, if there's no more discussion on 7D. Item eight is resolutions. Item A is Resolution CC-2023-25. This is a resolution amending Section 2 Policy Manual for Utility Accounts, billing and collection of the terms and conditions of service for municipal utilities to adopt Chapter 6, Advanced Metering Infrastructure, AMI opt-out, and approving the amended fees and charges for utility services scheduled to adopt new fees and changes for AMI opt-out. Dana Maddox is here to tell us more about what all of that means.
Good evening. Dana Maddox, Utility and Billing Services Director. So in September of 2018, trustees awarded an advanced metering infrastructure project known as AMI, contract to Clara. In June of 2021, after requests from several of our customers with concerns about these meters, trustees requested staff to develop an opt-out policy, which is why I'm here tonight. So first, I'd just like to give you an update on the project. We started updating the water meter transmission units, so we refer to those as MTUs, on all of our water meters in December of '21. We have approximately 65 of those left to install, which are on meters that are two inches and larger. They are not compatible and will need to be replaced. A lot of those meters are in big vaults, and we'll take equipment to break out some of that concrete and replace those meters. Staff is currently working with our vendor on how to complete those installations. On the electric side, commercial installations started in May of this year, 2023. Our contractors have installed a little over 1,900 meters, which depleted their inventory. So we have had major issues just getting AMI meters because of the chips that's in those. So the supply chain is just now starting to kind of meet all of the demands that are out there. We still have approximately 900 commercial meters to install. We received an update last week from our contractors that hopefully they should start receiving some meters from the factory as early as the end of September. So we're hoping the first part of October, we can start installing our residential meters, which is why we're here tonight to get that opt-out updated to our terms and conditions, which legal has helped us write. So before you tonight is the resolution to update our terms and conditions and the fee schedule addressing the cost to manually read the meters monthly. I'd like to just take a few minutes to discuss the fee schedule. These fees are a result of the electric cost of service study that we are currently in process with, with our consultant, Lisa Vedder, on just our electric rates. That'll be coming back to you later this year. These fees will help in assisting recovering the cost associated with servicing those meters. Not only was the cost based on our time, labor, and equipment costs, but a comparison using cities from the cost of service study. And I think you guys were provided with her documentation and those comparisons of the other cities. The opt-out one-time fee will only be charged if the customer wishes to have the meter exchanged after we have already installed the AMI meter on their residence. If they have chosen to opt out and want to opt back in, we will waive that fee because we want our customers on the AMI program. I can try to answer any questions you may have.
Counselors, any questions?
I just want to thank you for the explanation about how the fees were established and determined. I think that's a really important point for our community to understand. So thank you for that fee.
Thank you.
Yeah, while I don't necessarily share the concerns about this program, I appreciate the fact that we have the opportunity to let folks who don't want to participate not participate. And this seems like a reasonable fee based on the fact that we will have to have somebody out there reading those meters now that we wouldn't normally have to have if they were on the program. So it makes sense to me to see this implemented.
Can you share just a little bit about how people will, what the education process or outreach to the community about the AMIs, and if they want to opt out, what that might look like?
Yes. So they will be mailed a postcard, and it's pretty much the same postcard. So we had a little bit of difference. We mailed those out to our water customers before we started. We mailed all of those out to our commercial customers. And it just will add a line on there for our residential, because the opt-out will be for our residential customers. If they do not wish to have one, to contact our office to opt out. And so we can get with marketing also and do some, you know, public service announcements on that it's coming. Once we know for sure that we're going to get the meters, we've been promised quite a few times that they were coming, and then they didn't. And so I think once we can get those meters in our warehouse and know that we have the stock and we're truly going to be able to start installing those. And what we did on the water meters is we sent out postcards in different groups. So about three weeks before they were going to be in your area, they, we would mail out the postcards. So we don't want them so far in advance that people forget about them. So we'll do the same thing when we get ready to roll out the electric meters.
Yeah, I think that's great. People, I don't think they question when city workers are out, but they always kind of wonder what they're doing. And I feel like these are the types of things we should know as citizens, but maybe don't always know as citizens. So it's great that you have a program for that.
And the postcard will have a phone number to that company that's installing those, that they can call them directly. They'll also be able to make an appointment. So if they have dogs or locked gates, or if it's just not convenient, they'll be able to actually schedule an appointment when they would like to have that done.
Would it be feasible to also put a notice on their water, on their electric bill?
We could definitely do that. We could do a generic, coming in the next few months notice.
I tend to look at my electric bills. I don't tend to read my postcards though.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Further questions, counselors? Is there action on the resolution? I move to adopt Resolution CC-2023-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution is approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Dana. Appreciate you. Next up is item nine, ordinances on first read. We have ordinance 3525, an ordinance rezoning approximately 53 acres of property located east of 12th and Blakely and north of Stillwater Creek, including property more commonly described as 1200 South Adams Street, 1201 South Adams Street, from Office O and Agricultural A to P Public. This is the hospital land we discussed in our last meeting. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance 3525.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second read. All right, I didn't get to the right spot on my agenda here. Next up is appointments. We have our recently revived Bicycle and Pedestrian Ad Hoc Committee, which we have several folks who have applied to be a part of, which is fantastic news. This is an advisory committee, a couple of staff liaisons, and folks throughout our community who help provide information on bicycles, pedestrian issues, when it comes to transportation projects and development projects around town. So it's fantastic that we have a number of people who are willing to participate in this. I have eight applications on file, and I will read those names off, but I will say that I'm going to nominate all eight of these folks, because I think the more voices, the better on a committee such as this, to make sure we're pointing out all the different issues that people may deal with on these, in these topics. So we have applications from Mary Hoyt, Namalka Wirosyura, Kevin Musset, Cynthia Gedra, Paul Christian, Chris Peters, Kimberly Holmes, and Shelby Keller. And I will move that we appoint all of those folks to the B-PAC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for these appointments. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, those eight appointments are made to the Bicycle Pedestrian Ad Hoc Committee. Again, we appreciate everyone's willingness to serve and to provide that information and feedback on city projects. Next up, reports from the offices and boards. Ms. Carnley?
Request for an executive session, please enter 250 S30731, for purposes of discussing specific individuals with the position of city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes. I want to give congratulations to our esteemed Finance Department upon receiving the top recognition for government accounting on financial reporting for the 41st consecutive year. This achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada. The Exceptional Finance Financial Reporting Award recognizes the longtime commitment the city has with taxpayers, and the commitment of being good stewards with taxpayer funds. Our Finance Department have continued a phenomenal legacy of successful and outstanding work. So I just want to thank Kristy Clark and her team in the Finance Department for all their excellent work in achieving this award.
Absolutely. It seems, go ahead.
I actually have two other little announcements.
Well, hold on, before you say that. Kristy, I know it, I mean, it's fantastic, 41 straight years to be recognized in that way is a huge accomplishment. It feels like probably a fairly large burden to make sure that streak doesn't break, right? We're paying attention. Thank you.
I would also say, as someone, I work in administration finance at the university, and I know it is not considered the sexiest of all groups, but it is so important to have sound finances and to be good stewards of the public finances that we are entrusted with. So thank you for your efforts to ensure that that occurs.
Absolutely. Yep. So two other quick announcements. Ripley was without water today. They had a major water break, and our team was able to help assist them with some repair parts and helping them get their water back on, which before the meeting, I heard it was pumping and filling their towers. So that's great news. And on the same note, I want to give thanks to other communities that help us during those times of need, just the last couple of weeks, as you all know. Ponca City helped us with some couplings and fittings that we needed to repair some major lines. So it's always nice when we can help our neighbors, and our neighbors can help us. Also, good news, this is right before the meeting, we learned that on the ODOT Perkins Road project, that Lakeview is open. So that is great news.
Wow. My folks traveling to the junior high this year are very, very excited about that being open before that school opens. That's great.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, the city is accepting applications for citizen representatives to serve on two committees, the Board of Drainage Appeals and Building Trades Board. These committees are essential for increased development and infrastructure projects within our community. The position on the Building Trades Board needs to be filled by someone active in the electrical trade, and the position on the Board of Drainage Appeals needs to be filled by someone with knowledge of hydrology, engineering, stormwater management, or related field, and have no economic interest in the development or construction industries. If you would like to get involved in your local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider serving on one or more of these committees. For more information and to apply online, go to stillwater.gov, Stillwater, okay, Texas, I have this new address we have,
It's going to take some getting used to.
I know, kind of rote memories.
Counselor Hawkins?
It is hard to believe, but back to school in Stillwater. Stillwater Public Schools and Meridian Technology Center beginning this Thursday, and Oklahoma State University beginning August 21st. There will be an increase in walkers near campus and bus stops. Please be mindful when you're driving. Always stop at crosswalks and let pedestrians pass. Obey school zone speed limits and do not pass another vehicle in a school zone. Be an attentive driver. Put your cell phone away and be aware of what or who may be around you near or on the road. Some of those new freshmen at OSU, you've got to be careful of them. Additionally, vehicles must stop at least 20 feet before reaching a school bus that has stopped with its red lights flashing. Together, we can ensure our students and other walkers arrive at their destination safely.
Amen. Thank you. Counselor Clark?
I will add to the school bus thing, being a former school board member, that the only time you can pass a school bus is on a divided highway. The only place that we have that in town is there by the new Walmart on West 6th, and there are no bus stops there. If a bus is stopped with lights flashing, stop.
Anywhere in the community.
Anywhere in town. Okay. August is National Wellness Month. We encourage everyone to devote time to forming new healthy habits. Not all wellness initiatives have to be too complicated or challenging. For example, drink more water and less sugary beverages. Be more aware of what you're eating with healthy portions and increase the greens. Exercise more, which can simply mean to walk more. And of course, don't forget to stretch. Wellness includes physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Let's be intentional with stress management and self-care. For healthy resources, visit Total Health Fitness at stillwater-medical.org.
Thank you for that reminder. Not quite health-related necessarily, but I did run into Counselor Clark earlier today while we were both giving blood.
That's right.
Which is also a good reminder for.
And neither of us is lightheaded.
No, I made it out of there.
Yeah, and we did a power plus. We did the double. Yeah.
Counselor Harden?
It is also my turn to talk about back-to-school time in Stillwater. Thanks to Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology, and Oklahoma State University educators, administrators, counselors, cleaning staff, and everyone who do their part to help our students and families. Also, thank you to Stillwater Police, Fire Emergency Management Services, and all of our emergency responding entities who safeguard our lives every day. We cannot leave out our friends at Pine County Health Department and Stillwater Medical for all they do to keep us healthy and prepared to learn. Many thanks to everyone. Let's have a safe and successful 2023-24 school year.
Absolutely.
Stop for school buses.
All right. Well, I'll let you know about August being the final month, and this is great news. August is the final month to participate in the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce Perkins on, purchase on Perkins Road campaign. And it's the final month because Perkins Road will be open at the end of August. But this is where patrons can potentially win $1,000 in cash prizes while shopping local. While Perkins Road, US 177, is under construction, the Shop Local campaign helps show much-needed support to the businesses located along this roadway. So per the chamber, and you can get more information at their website, but to enter, you just go to Visit a Store on Perkins Road, make a purchase, and then you'll scan a QR code on the receipt, fill out a survey to enter. And for more information, again, go to the chamber's Facebook page or their website located at stillwaterchamber.org. All right. If there's nothing further, I will move that we recess the city council prior to item 14 on the agenda, excuse me, item 13 on the agenda. Second, we have a motion and a second to recess city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the city council will now be in recess. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for August 7, 2023. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Don't have anyone sign up for public comment and SUA. Resolutions, SUA 2023-6, Resolution amending Section 2 Policy Manual for Utility Accounts, billing and collections of the terms and conditions of service for municipal utilities to adopt Chapter 6, Advanced Metering Infrastructure opt-out, and approving the amended fees and schedules, excuse me, the amended fees and charges for utility services scheduled to adopt new fees and charges for AMI opt-out. This is the sister resolution what we discussed in council. Is there action on the item? I move to adopt SUA, Resolution SUA 2023-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the resolution is adopted. Are there any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion? officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. And at this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council at item 13 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the reason requested by the city attorney?
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we will now enter executive session. And we are back. Is there a motion to reconvene in regular session? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene the Stillwater City Council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the city council is now back into regular session. Do we have any action from executive session?
I move to direct SGR to not name finalists at this time in the current city manager recruitment and direct the search committee to work with SGR to continue the city manager search.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that motion carries. Any further business from executive session? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater City Council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.